Welcome to the April instructional school board meeting. I don't know, it's been a long month.
It's been a long year.
This is the instructional committee meeting and we are joined by some distinguished guests. But before we do that, I'd like to just announce who's here from the board this evening. We have instructional committee members Sarah Robinson, Sarah Sadowski, myself, Brenda Hastings, and sitting in tonight with us will be Pam Walsh. So we appreciate that.
We need to officially appoint me to Sarah.
I have to, oh, I guess we're appointing her tonight so that we can take a vote later on. So it's more than just being here. She's going to be voting with us this evening. So thank you for that.
Thank you Pam for sacrificing your time.
Yes, we do appreciate it. We also have assistant superintendents John Fabrizio and Kim Yarlot with us this evening. Thank you. And now we will turn it over to Kim.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We have two really exciting presentations this evening. Our first presentation is going to be from the SCL Social Emotional Learning Committee, partial membership of the Social Emotional Learning Committee, to here to talk to you about a pilot we did that was after we had first done the competencies that we adopted and the board adopted, the CASL competencies, and talking about the pilots, the selection process that we went through for selecting a program, and a presentation about the program that we selected, and an implementation plan, followed by a vote to bring this adoption forward to the school board. So we're going to start off. Fern, would you mind introducing your crew there, please?
Yes. So I'm Fern Seiden, the Director of Student and Staff Wellness, and today we have Meg Brown from CMS, grade three, and Liz Finney from BGS, grade five, and Nicole Vivier from CMS, grade three, and Kaitlin Schofield from BGS, grade three, and I am missing you, Kaitlin.
Kristin.
Kristin. Oh, you're there. Okay, good, good. Kristin Kaufman, kindergarten, MBS. Good. So as you can see, we had predominant grade three representation tonight, but that's just by chance. We had many, many others involved in the whole process, about 35 teachers overall during the entire process of choosing this program. So we're excited. We have been talking a lot about this, how we would like to introduce this program to you, and the process, and so we have the people who have know it best tonight here with you to talk about it. So tonight, just in terms of setting the context, especially for the, you know, people who are out and maybe listening tonight, this was, started out with a large district committee, the SEL Committee, and there had been a lot going on in the district for many, many years with this. This is, I guess, probably back in 2018 at least, that that very large SEL Committee was formed, and they had been talking about competencies and had established some, decided upon competencies and adopted the CASL model to lead, guide those prior to me coming into the district. And when I arrived, it was really time to choose an SEL program. The, the other piece of this that was very important was that the strategic plan really laid out that an SEL program would help us as a district moving forward to kind of hone our SEL goals. And there was a lot of agreement among that group that we wanted to really start creating very intentional experiences in our district and create common language that would be supported through an SEL program. And the process was that there were, am I supposed to do this? Okay, thank you. Good.
So I was just going to talk a little bit about the process that we went through to reach this final decision on our program that we chose. We, like she said, that there was a huge committee and things kind of changed, COVID, jobs changed, people took over. And so it ended up that when we got to this point, we were looking to look at different programs. There was 22 educators across all five school districts. We surveyed all the educators in the district to look at what they were looking for in a program. The principals reviewed the data. We went through and looked at CASL's website and looked at different programs to see what was approved and what was out there. And we looked at different programs, 12 teachers looked at different programs. And then we took two programs, Wayfinder and Changemakers, into the classrooms and piloted with students. And then made our final choice in January after experimenting, opening it up to other people. Some people tried a little bit of both. Some teachers, they were all in different buildings, different grade levels, to just kind of get a feel for that. And then came back and looked at the different, spent some time discussing what we saw with our kids and how it felt as teachers, and made this final decision in January of 2025, that this was the program that we felt like was the most engaging for kids. And that was a real important piece for us, is what was working in the classroom, not just what we saw in the books, because that, we all know, can look good on paper. But the most beneficial piece was getting it into the classrooms and seeing how kids reacted to it. And so, once it came to that point, we, we decided Changemakers was the one that kids were most excited about and that teachers were most excited about.
Can I just, this is K to five, or is it K to six?
K five.
K five, okay, thank you.
And so Changemakers was the one that we chose.
Oh, okay.
And so this beautiful colorful staircase represents sort of the framework of Changemakers. And so each big, the big words on each stair are the overarching concept or skill that we want the kids to gain. And then underneath are little sort of sub-skills or subsets that we learn about in each chapter. And what's important to know about this program is that it was, it was put together and developed by both psychologists and educators. And one of my favorite things about it is the Momentus Institute has their own elementary school. So they really used these lessons, and you could tell they developed them in a school with teachers in mind. And then also keeping in mind the latest research, brain research about how kids learn. And we definitely felt that these were the kinds of skills that we wanted our kids to be able to, to learn, and that we knew they needed to be taught explicitly. And we felt this program did those two things. And so by the end of the program, this is our hope, that all children can become and see themselves as Changemakers. And this aligns with Concord School District vision of a learner, you know, citizenship, courage, empowerment, working collaboratively, just having all those sort of, you know, being responsible. So we just felt like this program sort of embodied and was, again, explicitly teaching a lot of those skills that we as a district recognize as important for the students now and in the future.
So this is the kit that comes, each teacher will get a kit of their own for their classroom. It includes a manual that goes through the units and also gives some prompts for teachers to sort of give them some language around how to start some of the conversations in the classroom. It also talks about in the manual, the materials that you may need to complete each lesson, which is really, what's really nice from a teacher perspective, is it's things you already have. So it's easel paper, it's Post-its, it's markers. You know, they also allow for, you know, I think we set as an example, like, you know, one might be like painting stones, but you could also use like construction paper to create an oval, and that could be your stone. So, you know, there's some flexibility. The kit also has jobs that you can give to students, but it also has picture prompts and posters that you can put up. And it also comes with all the literature that you're going to use for the lessons already there. So you're not searching for things. And the books connect really well, and the students really enjoy them. So yeah, it's, it's really nice, too, that each teacher can have their own kit as well. So they definitely have, like, they get you ready right from the beginning. They're prepared.
So here's the Changemakers pacing guide. Each lesson is about 20 to 30 minutes. And depending on the grade level, it's 25 to 31 lessons throughout the whole year. So, like I said, it's one lesson for the week, which that will be included in our schedule. What we also really liked about this is the first unit, setting the stage is really closely aligned with the first six weeks of school, which is what a lot of teachers do. So it helps add some extra lessons, engaging opportunities and activities for students and teachers to supplement with. And as you can see, it kind of just goes through each unit. So if you look at unit two, the brain, it has four lessons that you can do that align with that unit.
That's just an example in the book. It gives you some prompts for a newer teacher or somebody who's not comfortable to get used to it, but it's only a suggestion so that you can kind of tell where you're going, but you can certainly use your own words. But it gives you an idea of this is how the lesson might go when you're talking to kids. There is a limited digital access, and this was kind of one of the interesting points for teachers. There's a lot we do digitally. And so we actually, one of the things we really liked about this program was how hands-on and real and authentic it was, rather than more digital stuff for kids. So the digital access is really for teachers to be able to pull up a lesson at home and look at that kind of thing. But it's not that kids are on a computer again. There's nothing that I've done with them on the computer through, through this program. It's, it's all, and you'll see, we have some samples and some things that kids did, and none of it is through a computer. So, limited digital access, I would say. Those two, first two pictures are mine. So this is where we got, this is where we got excited, because this is where we saw the kids, it working in the classroom. And so we just put up some things that kids did in the classroom to give you a sense of what kinds of activities they were doing. And this one happened to be about the brain. The first two pictures there kind of go together. The young man in the front, we were using his body to show, to talk about the vagus nerve and how it's connected to the brain and what actually happens when you take a deep breath. Instead of just telling kids to breathe, it really talks about what's happening in your bodies. And so the kids, we demonstrated on this child all the parts that it was touching. And then the kids laid on the floor and we traced them, and we drew, they drew their different parts and labeled them. And then there's a QR code there that they wrote their description and recorded themselves talking about, when I take that deep breath, what's actually happening. And so it was after all the research that they did, and then they put it all together to share with others in the building. People could scan their QR code and learn about it. So that was just, it was a two-part lesson that the fifth graders did that, that really helped them understand what's happening in their bodies, instead of just talking about what they should do all the time. It was, you could see with kids, they were really connecting and understanding how that was helping them. So it was pretty cool.
Can I just add Liz to that? What's really cool about this program, you saw those steps that were the framework of Changemakers, and it really builds upon each year. So, like in third grade, we learned about the brain, too. And I know they even started in kindergarten, but they're kind of building upon the different skills that they learn that they need to understand that's happening in their brain. So there, we didn't learn about the vagus nerve in fifth, in third grade, but they've learned about the amygdala and other things. So that starts to build. And by fifth grade, like my third graders will already have a lot of that information and be able to connect it to what they already know is happening in their body. So it's really cool to see how it builds.
I had a child sitting at the table saying something, we were having a discussion, and a kid said to me, "Yeah, it was so interesting. Last night at the table, my parents were asking me what we learned about." And the little brother had learned about the brain, and the sister had learned about the brain. And coincidentally, the high schooler who was in science was learning about the brain. So they all came in, they were like, "We learned about this." And we, and they, they just made a connection. So it was one of those nice, like Concord School District across the board, no matter what school. It was really cool that the kids could see that they were all kind of learning familiar things, too. It was really neat.
You gotta write that one down.
I know. It was, I was like, "Oh, my God, this is like perfect." It was awesome.
The two pictures on the right are from kindergarten journals. We have journals, and at the end of each lesson is a prompt that kind of gets the kids thinking about how what we just talked about relates to them or an experience they've had. And so you can see a boy kind of sitting there, you know, thinking, "I think that was about the breathing." And then the other was being mindful and making a picture in your brain. And so you can see the picture in her brain, just going on and on.
Guys, I have the original.
Oh, my.
Sorry, but I'm really very annoyed right now.
And so they love their journals. And on days when I'm like, "Do we have time?" They're like, "Yes." So they always are eager to kind of relate it to their own personal experience.
Oh, my God, this is so good.
I would frame this.
Sure, absolutely. And then Fern, another thing we did in kindergarten was Fern passed you out each a glitter jar, and I will need those back, or I will be in big trouble. But this was sort of from a settle-your-glitter lesson. So it's just about teaching them self-regulation. And so we refer to it as, "Oh, do you need to settle your glitter?" And so they'll, you know, they'll shake it up, and then they'll sit and watch it. They take a break, they go get them if they need them. They can do that during quiet time. They can do it anytime they need to. But, and you'll often hear that, like, kids will say to each other, "Oh, I think he needs to settle his glitter," or "I think I need to settle my glitter." And, you know, it's, it's really given them a lot of vocabulary and a lot of sayings. Like just the other day, we were learning about grit. And so they'll say, "Oh, I think he showed, I noticed he used grit when he did this." Or, you know, they'll talk to each other about, I hear them saying, "Well, we could use a strategy. I mean, I could, I could sing or in my head, or I could count to 10." Like, they always kind of have those strategies in their brain. So it's, it's been lovely. Yeah.
I'd love to see like a 25-year-old be like, "Bro, settle your glitter."
And what's, what's wonderful about this and makes this, you know, such a great, you know, progression from where we've been, is that with this program, the kindergarteners are, every one of them makes one of these. And then in another, I think it's second grade, there's just, or even first grade, there's just one of these in the classroom. So it's not that, you know, by fifth grade, everybody's still walking around with a glitter jar. It's very developmentally appropriate and trying to create those internal systems that enable a child to learn.
Given the world we live in right now, I would like a good, my task at work every day, get off a call, finish reading a newspaper story, settle my glitter, glitter in my brain.
And I, I just think what you've seen here is you're seeing the idea of how this was developed. The origination of this is about social emotional wellness. So rather than thinking about social emotional learning as just skills, it's the end result is about the wellness of a child and the sort of mental health and well-being and how we get there and the kind, you know, incorporating the neuroscience that we have learned about that really is the neuroscience of learning and that, you know, all learning is social emotional. And so, you know, when we can sort of have this foundation, now our teachers are equipped, as you've already heard, just in one pilot year, that's not even a full year, right? Like, to see how equipped they are to help their kids, because now they have this shared vocabulary and this shared understanding of what it means to help a child prepare for learning. It's always important with SEL to remember, it's not just, it's, this isn't for the sake of teaching SEL. This is for the sake of being really effective learners in our lives, not just in school, but outside of school, everywhere we are, you know, and every, you know, to, to think about what it would mean to have had this information as a little person, and to grow up with that, and what, what it could mean for our kids. It's, it's really exciting. And so discover, you know, finding this program, it feels like a really wonderful fit for this community, because we are a, I mean, this community has already gone through a lot of what was called trauma-informed training, like a few years ago, with a Project Aware grant that the district had. So there's a lot of very deep and knowledgeable teachers in this district. And so this, I think, meets them where they are at, too. So I just wanted to, and, and teachers who really care about engagement. I was surprised when I got the data back from the original survey saying, you know, "No, we don't want some," they really wanted something engaging and meaningful. Like, nobody wants to check a box, right? It's not just about that. It was really that they wanted something that met their needs.
And to give what we know our kids need.
Yes, and it was, yeah.
And what you may yourselves need. I mean, it's a stressful job that you have, and it's good for us to remember as adults, too, sometimes, "What's happening in my body right now?"
For sure.
"What, what do I need to get my central nervous system back?"
There is actually research showing that when teachers are teaching this, it actually helps them as well. So that's, that makes a lot of sense.
So this is, I was so happy. These are so cute.
I just wanted to share, this is some, I don't know, this is, this is some feedback from my own class. I, we've been doing Changemakers since the beginning of the year. I was, you know, part of the pilot group that originally got it. I got it in the summer, so I was able to kind of like really lean into it. And I started from the beginning of the year. And it's really shaped like my classroom community. And like everyone has already mentioned, given us a lot of just shared vocabulary and shared strategies that we've learned and practiced. We do them daily, and I see kids, you know, helping each other with them. And it's given them tools to really help their own learning, which is, I mean, now more than ever, we really, really need that. My class actually was in charge of running an all-school meeting. That was the focus with self-control. And I was so excited. We happened to just have that as our theme for the month, because my class was able to stand up, and every single one of them shared a different strategy they have for when they're feeling anxious, or stressed, or nervous, or overly excited. What can they do to practice self-control? And we shared those different strategies with the class, with the whole school. And they were all-
I told her she should have taped it.
Yeah, I really wish I did. But they were all just really excited and eager to just share. Like, they felt confident, confident, showing what they can do. So I just had some kids, I, I just kind of off the cuff said, "If anyone wants to write down some, some feedback from how they feel like Changemakers has been going this year, what have you really liked about it? What have you learned?" And here were just a few of the examples that I got. So I really like, the first one just is a good example of a kid who's noticing that she needs to use these strategies even outside of school. She wrote, "My glasses are not on, so I can't read it," but something about how when she needs to calm down before she gets on her noisy bus ride home, she has some tools to help her feel calm and not overwhelmed. So I thought that was a good example. And then the middle one, Changemakers has really shifted my learning experience. And it's shifted my teaching experience. So I think that is really nice to see kids noticing, like, "Oh, I'm able to go about my day in a different way when I have these tools." And then the last one I added there was just, I thought the last sentence really spoke to kind of what our goal is, the end goal of Changemakers is, we're trying to make world changers, right? We're trying to make these people, little people are realizing they can, you know, have impact to their world around them just by, you know, understanding their own feelings, their own actions, and how they treat others. So I thought there were some good examples of how this is really impacting our classrooms.
So our next steps are, we're going to be going through some train-the-trainer sessions with the, the people from Momentus Institute. And so that's coming up in May. And I wanted to invite any one of you who would like to just be there for an hour to participate in that. If you're interested in learning more, we can get you a link. And teacher professional development, that's, will happen at the beginning of the year in person. And teacher professional development, that's will happen at the beginning of the year in person for three hours. And that's going to be really about help helping them feel equipped to encounter this material. And then we were, we were planning to do some family engagement events. And we'll definitely, there are family letters with this program. So we will be sending those out, making sure they're translated. We will be definitely using trimester feedback loops to make sure we're keeping up with how are things going? What needs to be tweaked? What needs to be, how much, you know, what support you need? And then the Project Aware grant will enable us to really start seeing how this fits into our whole tiered system of support, our MTSSB system. And we, who knows what we'll see, but that's some really deep, deep dive data that we're collecting in with all that we're doing in schools. So it's it'll be interesting to see, we have a couple, we have a year and a half of baseline data. So it'll be kind of fun to see if there's any change in what we see with this addition of this program. So and I see, did you have other things you wanted to share?
No, it was just posters.
More, just more posters and things, but it's so exciting. I mean, I think.
Just more samples in case you need them.
Yeah. Do you guys have any questions?
I do have a couple. One, I think you've answered. Will all of the schools be doing the sort of, will you have a scope and sequence that all of the schools will be following? So it wouldn't matter if students left from one school and went to another, they just.
Correct. That's the beauty of this is there is a scope and sequence and it's not repeated year after year, the same kinds of lessons. The the topics stay the same, but the the actual content gets deeper and deeper. And again, that's the meticulous, you really see this as a very meticulously built program that people were really engaged in making sure that it it did that. And so, yes, we've talked a lot about with SEL. Fidelity is a word that we use a lot, right? But it brings up a sense of like, are you doing the exact same way every time? Sort of from a scientific method perspective. But in SEL, the important thing to think about is integrity. Are we doing this with integrity for the purpose of that? Is it meeting the purpose? And we really want to make sure, you know, we know that teacher autonomy is really important for self-efficacy, to feel like I make a difference and I can express myself. So if a teacher finds that a book that doesn't quite fit their classroom need, but it's on the topic of, let's say, empathy, that they have a book that they loved, it's okay to turn, you know, for them to swap it out for something else. We don't want to dictate this, we want it to be taught with integrity. So they may, let's say, I'm just mentioning that in terms of if they're in fifth grade here, they might have some slight changes if they change from school to school. But the topics are the same. And as long as they're, and that's why we have our in-school teams that'll be helping as well, you know, with some implementation help from our Project Aware team. We'll also be helping with SEL implementation. So we're going to have a really strong four-year implementation cycle. I think that's really going to help this be, you know, be the best possible outcome for implementing SEL. And we'll be able to really say, is this, you know, is this what we need? Is this really helping kids? And is it helping teachers as well? Because as you said, I think you do see a lot of that with the implementation of SEL.
And my last question was where I, your days are very scheduled and very full. Where in the schedule does this, does this once a week lesson take place? Is it a social studies? Where where does it come from in your day?
So far, the we've, Kim and I have done a lot of work with the principals to look at master schedules and to have the elementary schools really have group discussions about that topic. And right now, what that's been, we've landed on is the interactive read aloud. Because literature is such a big part of this, a big part of this curriculum, every kit comes with like 13 to 18 children's books that go with the program. It's pretty amazing. So it really will build every classroom library. And so interactive read aloud really makes a lot of sense. Another one, as you saw, every every classroom builds a journal. And so another one could be one day of writing could be dedicated. So it really is that kind of SEL across the curriculum model potentially, so that you're not giving up something or replacing, but it's it's using SEL as a as a way to get at the other component, which would be the writing or the reading, interactive reading. So that's right now where we stand. I think teachers have a lot to say about that. I know they they struggle to fit science in, they struggle to fit. So it is probably been the biggest concern that teachers have presented because they still want to do this right. And so they see this and they get an immediate, you know, tension around like, I want to do this right, but I can't add another thing because it just literally doesn't fit into the minutes of our day.
And that's what I just want to make sure we're not giving you another tool that you don't have the ability to use.
So I think it sounds like principals have been pretty on board with understanding that this does need to be, you know, if we're making this a priority, it's going to be, it's got to go somewhere, right? So this year has been hard, I think, as we're piloting because we haven't been given that. We've had to kind of been be a little flexible and wiggle things around. But I have, ever since we had the read aloud discussion, I've been doing it mostly on Mondays in my read aloud time. And then it kind of integrates well into my literacy block because if there's like a journal entry or something that they're reflecting on, I'm able to have them do that. And then sometimes I will need to like, during my closing circle, we have like a quick wrap up of discussion of it. So there are ways to kind of fit it in. But I do think if principals are on board and understanding, teachers will feel supported that it's in our schedule.
Fantastic.
Sounds great and definitely needed.
Yeah, it sounds like you can easily integrate this, like you said, into the culture of your classroom. So there's elements of this curriculum that you can very easily point to and say, in in this small community, we all agree to X, Y, and Z. And we're going to talk about these when interpersonal conflict comes up, when we're seeing a friend, you know, struggle with a behavior. Like you're professionals, you know how to integrate all of this stuff. Like you, I guarantee you already find ways, but I'm grateful that we're asking about, you're very valuable in limited time as well.
Pam and then Sarah.
And this might be more a Kim question, which is how much does this cost?
Oh, yeah.
And is it an ongoing cost or is it a one-time?
That's a great question. Each kit, first of all, the Project Aware is paying for this. So yay. So and and that is a SEL is a required, one of the required activities of the grant can be SEL because it's all about prevention and social emotional wellness. So that's wonderful. And so that's going to be the bulk of the cost. Because it's a kit, there won't be ongoing costs. The company is excellent in terms of its support of us. So should something change in the future, my guess is they will release a, you know, a PDFs that we would just update. But and as we said, there's a lot of flexibility in this. So if books become, you know, storybooks become updated or something else is better, that might become something that teachers advocate for is, you know, changes in the the literature they want to use. But so for the next four years, this is a covered activity through the grant. And, you know, after that, it would be kit replacements and they're about $900.
So it's $900 per kit?
About that, yeah.
So we're spending how much upfront to buy how many kits?
I think right now the cost is $52,000, but I would have to get you the exact PO, like the exact invoice for that. But we, yeah, that's that's part of our Project Aware grant and as well as some training. The training cost, she comes up here, we're going to fly her in. So that's the only cost, but the the training itself is not an extra cost, which often it is.
But it's included in that $52,000.
Yeah, except for her flight.
And. Ms. Hastings asked this, but I just wanted to double check. Like this will be all the elementary schools, nobody will be using another program. We will not be paying for another program that somebody else really likes and wants to keep.
No, this is now, so that is a really good question because when I there, you know, when I arrived here, there was a lot of different, like, oh, you're using this. But that was because teachers are searching. Like if you see what they were trying to solve a problem and being super innovative, trying like, we need something, you know? And so they would find something and use it. So the that will, you know, be eliminated. I mean, I was, I'm pretty excited that I agree with this crew, that they were interested in something live and in person and not digital. Digital would mean ongoing, probably around $10,000 a year. And now that we've moved away from that, hopefully this, I I do see this as having a pretty long shelf life because it was well-built. And the neuroscience it's built on is very, it's neuroscience. It's not even really, it's not theories that would change so much as, except keep growing and expanding and understanding more about how the the body and brain process, you know, emotions. So, yeah, I think that we're on pretty solid ground with this one in terms of a long-term sustainability plan.
Thank you. Sarah?
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you for our fabulous presentation. This Change Makers looks amazing. I was really curious about what, I mean, the pilot, this is tremendous engagement from teachers and just kudos to all of you. And I'm curious what the initial response rate was on the survey? And were there themes in the teacher survey that Change Makers maybe doesn't address? And if you could share.
Oh, boy. I have to go back a little bit to look. I think a little bit, there was discussion about tier two intervention type of things. And so this doesn't, this program really doesn't offer those kinds of things, but that's not really what we were looking for. We felt like we were looking for a tier one. We wanted across the district, we wanted everybody getting the same kind of, you know, teaching. And then tier two, we have a lot of other things that we've focused on and we've tried and we've implemented and that's a smaller population. But we felt like this was school-wide, this was district-wide, this was common language, this was everybody getting that tier one. And there were so many benefits that we felt okay about not having that. And maybe they will develop some tier two along the way, or maybe they have some things since they have their own school. But that wasn't what we were looking for. So that was one of the drawbacks. The other piece was the discussion of digital learning. We talked about not digital learning per se for the kids, but teaching. Some teachers are very digital oriented. They need, they go by slides every day and they put it up there. And this doesn't come with that, but that's a very easy fix. I, we thought we could prepare that kind of stuff to kind of make our own and do some summer work and get those ready for teachers. So like when you pull up a lesson, here's the lesson. And here's like the basic, if the poster we thought was too small, let's put the poster up for you. So easy stuff, but it could also accommodate for teachers who that's their style.
I think we had, if I remember the number correctly, I think it was about 130. Now, we had like all of the, like, it was a lot. And we had a very high number of respondents to that.
When you think about survey fatigue, that's tremendous.
Yeah, and it was, this was way last year, you know, this was a last year in spring. So but it was a high number and it really, what I recall was that it was really about high engagement. They liked the idea of literature. And they wanted the the topic areas to be about emotional learning and like emotional literacy and behavior support. Topics that would lend themselves to that. But we do have all that. If that's something you want to ever see, I can pull up that that documentation.
Well, thank you all very, very much. I'm assuming that you would like us to make a recommendation to the full board this evening for our next meeting.
So moved.
Okay. So I will move, Sarah's movement, the movement is that we will recommend this program.
To the full board.
Full board for vote on the May, is it May 5th?
And our second.
My second meeting.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? It passes forward.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for the hard work.
Thank you.
Take good care of that classroom down there.
Oh, yeah. Thank you so much.
Seeing those engaged.
It's so cool. It's really just take stuff.
I mostly just want to say hello.
Thank you so much.
If you have any interest in learning.
I do, I do.
My kids are in it. My kids are in it.
Make sure we get you when they get trained.
Yeah, when you're in an hour.
I'd love to just come in and see a lesson too.
Yeah, it'd be super cool.
It's so great.
It's such amazing engagement.
Yeah, they've come out to talk about us.
We have amazing teachers here.
Really, really.
Very lucky.
Hey, thank you all for your help.
Bye, guys.
It's not that the spotlight is going.
I'm ready, I ready.
Kim's the best.
Feel sad for me.
You're in safe territory, I promise.
Exactly.
Next, we're going to hear a presentation by Chantel Denaplie on our iReady Classroom implementation. So this is always an exciting math information event. So the iReady Classroom is a math program that was, went through a similar process as the SEL program, whereas we had done a pilot and selected this program and got approved by the board and adopted for this year. So it's, I thought it was very important and relevant to give you an update on how that adoption is going because it was such a big change. And we would do the same with the with the SEL program, Change Makers, that you just heard about, will give you an update at the end of the year. So that's why we've asked Chantel here.
All right, so I have no glitter jars, I'm sorry. I have no team of teachers, but I did want to kick off, rather than just hearing from just me about how our math classrooms are going, we were able to interview some students. It actually was for the purpose of our recent family nights where I really wanted parents to hear from kids on how they felt about math. Everything students say, it came from them. Some of the things they say were pretty funny because it wasn't what they said to me. And when I started my camera, there they went. It's only about a minute, but I really did want you to just hear some cuter voices to kick us off.
I love it.
As long as the volume works.
So I think we have to figure out with our new video system how to have sound running with multiple screens.
Yeah.
So what I'll do, I'll send you all that video. It's just, it's the purpose of cuteness, to be perfectly honest.
Yeah. It works. It's a powerful weapon.
You know it's here.
Yeah.
Now I'm wishing I brought glitter. Some of the things that the kids said that that I was so excited about were the same things that I wanted to share with you and that we shared with you when we were talking about wanting to implement this program. So many of the kids that I interviewed from school to school talked about how much they loved working together with partners, as I think you heard that little boy say. The collaboration in math class, the the idea that they're solving word problems and real-world problems. We are really focusing on kids being sense makers in the classroom. And then, again, teachers are working very hard to find ways to make sure that this program is successful for all of our students. So students are, what I'm seeing, feeling more successful being able to access their math instruction. Some of the things that we've really focused on and that I'm seeing the results of because we're seeing a lot of commonalities across classrooms, there has been a lot of professional development as we've been implementing this program. And we started that over this summer. So our summer opportunities, of course, always voluntary for this summer that were offered to teachers, included a cohort for all teachers within K to six and including our special educators as well. So we had a preparing instruction cohort for each grade level individually. And we actually had 45 teachers attend across all five schools this summer, which was huge because it's really hard to get, you know, it's really hard to work schedules out to get people to attend over this summer. So that was really exciting. We did it in August. There were seven half-day sessions that were offered and teachers came excited to learn. So there was a lot of enthusiasm about kicking off the year learning, which is, was a really great start. We then made sure to be really specific about our professional development days this year and did prioritize math because this was such a large undertaking. So we had our iReady experts come in. We we hired them through Curriculum Associates. That was part of the package that that we committed to. And for all of our days, September, October, November, and March, there was a different focus of our professional development days, beginning with preparing to teach with iReady and giving us that baseline to allow us to get in and all feel comfortable teaching, moving all the way up to our latest one, which was really leveraging the math representations and thinking more about building that content knowledge even stronger while we're using. and thinking more about building that content knowledge even stronger while we're using iReady Classroom. These were half-day, three-hour sessions, so it was just enough to give us all those common experiences. And what was nice about these is it wasn't just our classroom teachers. We had an interventionist cohort that really focused on the intervention tools in the program. Our math tutors came and joined in and were a part of those intervention groups. And we had our administrators sitting in all of our sessions. So our administrators were trained as well on these days, which was wonderful. On the other half of those professional development days, teachers engaged with their grade-level teams across the district in grade-level PLCs. These were facilitated by our school administrators, which gave them a great opportunity to dive in a little deeper with teachers as well. They were planned with videos of iReady lessons in action and opportunities for teachers to debrief and have discussions about what they noticed, how that was alike and different from their own instruction and share some different strategies. They engaged in articles for learning and different discussion. And then they did have plenty of opportunities within that time as well, just to collaboratively plan together, put together materials and figure out, you know, what is it looking like across those different schools? Because we're really looking for commonality in math instruction for the reasons like I think Brenda asked, you know, is, will we know that if a student moves from school to school, that they're getting the same experiences? We're also being more, just making, paying more attention to the fact that they all are going to run it together and they all need to have those same experiences. And I have found that it's going really well for our sixth grade to be aligned with our K to five schools. The sixth grade teachers are very excited about that and are excited to know what the learning looks like as they're coming up and being part of those trainings. So again, these PLCs were an opportunity to not just get that, you know, I'm sitting and, and being a part of a training session, but then they were able to strengthen their use of iReady tools and resources with their colleagues from other schools. In addition to that, and I think that the model that we have with our Project C integration in our schools really allows us to make sure that our trainings aren't just once and done, but we're able to continue that work. Because we have Project C coming in and giving our students science lessons, we're able to have those ongoing math meetings in every one of our schools at all of our grade levels. And these are just some of the things that we've really focused on. They have been very intentional this year to always be focused on ongoing professional development with iReady Classroom. Some of the things such as, there are so many tools within iReady Classroom that that was actually a pro and con in our committee, that it was a lot to, to take on. It was a lot to wrap your head around and this has been an opportunity to slowly navigate those resources together and to take on small bits. We do collaboratively plan together and unlock new learning. There are a lot of short videos that really help us understand what the major learning is, that teachers don't always have time to watch on their own in their own planning, so we can unpack and discuss those together. And in addition to that, it's been an opportunity to be looking at data, whether it's data that comes from larger assessments or whether it's just looking at student work and what students are doing. But this has been just a continuous way to make sure that we're keeping up with that, that professional development that they're getting throughout the year. In addition to teachers, I think that we've paid close attention to all of our stakeholders as far as our professional development. So leaders have had training of their own. I really want to highlight, leaders have been a really visible part of all of the professional development. So as I shared before, the professional development days, they not only were a part of each of the sessions, but they also led and were an active part of the PLCs. So they're really aware of what an iReady Classroom should look like. They did have their own summer leadership day where we included some teacher leaders in that as well, but were able to dig into some different tools and ways to support teachers. And that was from one of our iReady facilitators. They've also been engaged in both fall and spring learning walks, which to me was a really valuable experience that I was able to share with all of our building administrators. And from, from what I was told and have heard, we're welcomed by teachers across our different schools. So through our iReady learning walks, both the administrator and myself had a, a day within each of the buildings where we were able to walk through for 10 minutes, 15 minutes, multiple different classrooms with a rubric that our iReady facilitators shared with us, where we were looking for key pieces of the iReady Classroom. The message that was shared with teachers that was really important was this was a year where our administrators really needed to engage in knowing what to look for in a math classroom using this program so that all of our feedback aligns and that we're not giving misleading feedback to teachers. So, you know, sitting in our ongoing meetings, digging into the same resources together and then walking through classrooms with an iReady facilitator really allowed us all to have some great discussions on what are these major shifts in discussion, in, in the classroom that we're looking for, such as turn and talks and classroom discourse. And it was a great discussion for both administrators, but also teachers. Because what I brought back to teachers after those learning walks was that same rubric for teachers, so that we can think about, you know, what are, what are those things we're reflecting on when we're planning for instruction.
So this was a hard part for a lot of the educators because the program is a lot, really focuses on student discourse. So you have to relinquish some control. It's not the teacher standing and delivering, it's the teacher standing and prompting and then the students having to have really intentional struggle with, with what they're trying to figure out. So there's something called try it, discuss it, and.
Connect.
Connect it. And so you'll give a student a problem with no, with no pre-teaching and really getting them to embrace that struggle. And that can be really hard for educators. So the very beginning of the year, if you walked into a classroom and saw this, you could see like, oh, you know, or maybe an assistant goes over and says, well, this is the answer or something like that, that sort of need to have the kids get it right. But instead, it's really building that thinking classroom. And that's a huge shift in instructional practices that I wanted to share, that when you see it now, when you walk through classrooms, it's, there's so much more ease and comfortability on the teachers' parts.
Well, it's not easy to have somebody, your administrator and other people walking through your classroom with a rubric, sort of grading you as you're trying to learn something new yourself. So that, you know, there was probably a certain amount of nervousness with that, I would understand.
Absolutely. And these learning walks, you know, they, they weren't on, everyone knew we were in the schools. But what was great about these learning walks is what they showed me about teachers that I, you know, couldn't thank them enough for, is that people want feedback and they want to do things well. And they were really open to allowing us all to learn together. And I was really expecting a lot of pushback. And so what was really exciting was, I didn't, not to my face, I, I didn't get any pushback and, and the principal said the same thing. And what was really exciting about that was, it showed the culture of learning that we've really walked into with, with beginning this new program. And that, you know, there's an overwhelming agreement that we had to shift something. You know, we, we've got to think about different ways of teaching with this new math program and people have been so open to it. So that's been a wonderful takeaway from this implementation.
So it sounds like the culture of, of learning for students and staff is growing and developing and that's something really special.
That's been my observation.
Great. That's awesome.
Because you're right, classroom learning walks worried me a bit too, on what the, the takeaway would be.
Right. Yeah, I didn't participate in any of those, but what I mean by walk, I, I go into buildings frequently, a couple of times a week and will walk into classrooms and just visit. So I'm seeing that more relaxed approach to this program.
So I couldn't resist. This came from our math nights, but you know, our iReady program has lovely monsters that, that, that go with the lessons and especially the online tools. But what I really wanted to share here was the smiles and the fact that, you know, we're really excited that both administrators and educators are learning together and engaged because you can't have a strong implementation without that. And they will love that I shared with you these lovely photos. So the, the last piece too, again, we're thinking about teachers, tutors, special educators. We've also done some PD for our ed assistants. So offered at the end of school days in all of our buildings have been ed assistant trainings where we're even training them on, you know, what does it look like during the try, discuss, connect? When can we help kids? And what does helping versus empowering look like? Because that's a very different shift, especially when you're working with students who struggle and you just want them to feel successful. We've also thought about family engagement. So at the beginning of the year during open houses, there was a grade-level specific newsletter that was provided to all families and also sent out on Parent Square. There have been ongoing family letters. That was a piece we really liked about this program. They're right in their student books, so kids can just rip them right out of their books. But family letters go home almost weekly with every one of the lessons that tell parents what the focus is of the learning. On the back of the newsletter is activities that they can do at home that support the learning, usually game-like things. There have been letters provided with instructions for online access, especially for our grade three to six students, because they, they can access the digital tools at home if parents are looking for that. And lastly, we did just wrap up a family night in each of our elementary schools with our iReady Monster mascot, where we introduced iReady to families. And we were able to not only share with families in case they didn't know that we did have a new program, new resources that we're using, but allowed them to play games and do activities that were connected to the program. Those nights, we had over 211 families signed into them with over 580 people in attendance. So we were really excited. We filled some cafeterias, we had, you know, the Monster was a hit. It might've been a little cheesy, but it got kids having fun. So as you can see, they engaged in both the physical and the digital tools, showed their parents some things they were learning, they did a little math together and really the goal was just to celebrate change and change in a successful way.
John, is that you in the mascot costume?
No, I live too far.
I didn't think of asking.
A little tall.
That's when it's helpful to have a couple of kids at home of my own.
That's right.
So for year two implementation, we certainly, you know, in all transparency, are still planning for what our, you know, our year two professional development will look like. But things we do know, we have on the books for August 18th, there will be a full day of professional development for new incoming teachers because it's essential that we don't just throw them in and that they, they begin with some planning. Grade seven has shared with us that they have heard a lot of success and have been looking at the program that sixth grade has been engaging in and would like to see more coherence going up to seventh grade. So grade seven has asked us, and we're still looking at what this would look like, but they have asked us to engage in a full-year pilot for next year. If this ends up going through, then they are putting together a proposal for summer curriculum work where we would dive into their first unit together. They would be invited to that August 18th PD day for new staff and they would also receive the ongoing support, those grade-level math meetings that sixth grade is receiving that I'm facilitating with them.
Just as a clarification too, for grade seven would be piloting the grade seven iReady Classroom math program. And those students who are prepared and ready for a pre-algebra will continue with Open Up, the Open Up Algebra program. So it's for the general, we, we have that right now. We have general sessions for seventh graders, plus we have the pre-algebra classes. This program has developed an algebra program, but we're not there yet. We're going to year five of Open Up Algebra curriculum. We are going to look at different options going forward. So we'll put together a study committee for the, this coming year and decide whether we stick with Open Up Algebra or we select a different program.
One thing that Chantel and I spent a lot of time talking about was the fact that with this program, there is no supplemental program for special ed. It is the program. And that's been a major shift for some of our educators who have been used to using supplemental materials and creating their own materials and, and pulling kids out and having kids in separate groups and all those things. And we have been a united front, I would say, on this one, where when the pushback has come, we have said no. And really had to work with our assistant, assistant principals at the elementary level who oversees special ed to say, please, let's, let's, the, let's train the program with fidelity and then let's use the program with fidelity and then make decisions, let our data guide us on do we need to do something different in the future for kids. There'll be individual kids that we probably will be too, because nothing is ever all. But for the majority, we're seeing pretty amazing results with our data right now.
That's fantastic. Yeah, I love hearing that. Are you seeing more comfortableness with the staff too in, in doing this?
There is. And I think one of the big things that, that I've seen through doing that is more collaboration between special ed and regular ed. What I'm hoping to see more of is that students are not doing two different things, depending on which teacher they're working with, but a more cohesive program. That doesn't mean that we're not giving students what they need if we're trying to fill gaps. That means we're using the data and looking at what, where do we need to pull our resources? What is the intervention using these iReady resources and the data that it's providing us? And we did see on our mid-year diagnostic that many of our special ed students made significant growth. That doesn't mean that they're, they're where we need them to be yet, but that means that they're moving towards it and we're working towards filling the gap. And, and that cohesion is how we're trying to do that.
Love that.
Well, full disclosure, I spent the hour before this meeting doing the percentages unit for a quiz tomorrow.
And how did you do?
I did okay. I, I will say that, you know, I had went all through math and when some of these units, I'm like, and you should have Mrs. Curran check her answers tomorrow. Because I'm like, oh, you know. But one of the things.
Struggle's part of it?
Struggle's part of it. You know, there's some AI involved on my part occasionally. You know, I had to learn what number sentences were during COVID, just not something I ever knew. But I guess one of the things that I'm wondering about is how are you preparing the kids to this new approach, especially those who have had a more disjointed, you know, our sixth graders have had a very disjointed math experience from, you know, COVID and switching programs, but also, you know, getting them to, and maybe this is just a struggle in my house, but show their work and learn that part of it when they're so used to doing things online and like not losing, you know, I worry about, you know, the take-home is great, but like when you're on the computer, it's very easy to like, and that looks like the right answer, which I think is a problem sometimes with the evaluations, but also just wanting to make sure that they're not, they're, they have the underlying knowledge as well.
So that's not only a problem in your house. You know, there's a couple of things. One thing I want to, you know, make sure that we're all clear on is the, and this is important, the, the math is not different. We're still using the same standards. The math strategies haven't changed. It's more of a different instructional approach in how we're teaching them. So the, I think what's really important, you mentioned in, in part of that, you know, the struggle on, on getting kids to be able to go from computer to paper in some of the online tools. That's one of our tools and resources within this program. Certainly in the classroom, they are not on the computer, the whole math class. In order to do things on the computer, kids do need to take the ownership of being able to look at something on the computer and then being willing to show their work on paper. The same is true for written assessments. They need to be willing not to always do. They need to be willing not to always do everything in their head, but to be able to show things, draw models, you know, think of flexible strategies when it might not be working for them on paper. Um, teachers have really been collaborating about what that could look like this year. So one example is having, you know, there's, there's one grade level group that created little booklets for their students that are their thinking books for when they do things on the computer, where um, they're accountable, because accountability has to happen with that too. They're accountable to be able to show off their thinking and what they did. Um, I do think that makes a difference in our test results because when kids are just clicking through things, I can't do a lot of that math in my head, the way that some kids are showing that they they think they can, right? So so there's that piece. As far as transitioning to a new program and what that learning looks like in the classroom, the biggest shift is being able to try things versus mimicking. So the old approach that we took to math was I'm going to teach you how to do it and then you're all going to do it. And then I'm going to assess you and I'm going to expect you to show me that same strategy that I've just been teaching you. And what we found was it didn't last. So that's why they could do it at the end of one grade and then in the next grade, we're finding we have to reteach it again. What we're trying to do now is have the kids figure things out first. Try something on their own, think of flexible strategies, share their thinking with others. And then we put it all together and push them towards some more efficient strategies. The ownership is there for our students. Um, the students who weren't willing in the beginning to try it, I'm now not seeing blank whiteboards or blank papers. They might not be there yet, but I'm seeing something. And we are focusing on those things that the group before shared, like the grit, the perseverance. How do I get them to care about wanting to share their strategy with somebody else? So um, I think fifth and sixth grade probably have it the hardest right now because it's not what kids are used to. But what they're seeing in their classrooms, what I've observed going in, um, they're already getting there. The kids are excited to to be able to try something on their own and to be able to come up with their own thinking. So I think it's a, it's a process for sure. And you're not the only one in your house seeing someone who doesn't want to show their work. That's a daily struggle.
You you mentioned looking at the seventh grade and it is a general versus pre-algebra. And and I think one of the things we've talked about is, you know, wanting algebra to be more of a default in eighth grade. And so wondering how, if we're separating kids into pre-algebra and general, how does that get us to algebra as a default in eighth grade?
Right, I um, it's happening now. They have a general, a general um, seventh grade math and a pre-algebra um, open up math. So it, teachers are currently teaching two programs. Um, the seventh grade teachers, I I was not intending for this to go to the seventh grade level, but they've seen the excitement at the sixth grade with among those educators and have just really asked for something that they think they've heard is a better program. That being said, we're still really pushing the lever towards the pre-algebra. This is for students who wouldn't be ready for that.
And that's what I'm concerned about is, you know, and I, you guys are the experts, I'm not, but for everything I read, I've read is that um, if you assume kids should be in algebra, they're more likely to succeed
Right.
in algebra. And if you give them the choice of algebra versus something else, they're going to, a lot of them are going to choose something else.
Yep.
And then they won't get on that track that they need to be on for. So I I, that's my worry is that we are going to be tracking kids out of algebra.
Right. There's still the goal of having all students be taking algebra in eighth grade. And it's going really well at the high school with the students doing algebra too in ninth grade. They've noticed a really big difference. So um, Kylene and Tim and Jay, the principals of the two schools and the math department heads and myself and Chantel meet regularly to discuss that. And we're looking at students, as many students as we can to be in the algebra by eighth grade. Um, but we have to be able, we have to be prepared to differentiate for those students who just will not be ready.
But it, so my question is if a student ends up in this general in seventh grade, does that mean that they're not going to be in algebra in eighth grade most likely?
It doesn't necessarily, and that's part of the pilot that we're looking at. I don't mean to say that we're using students as, you know,
Yep.
as, you know, for the pilot. But what I'm wanting them to do is do a crosswalk with pre-algebra skills that are being taught within this grade seven. I'm not the expert in grade seven um, math or pre-algebra, the staging for it. But one of the things they're going to be doing is looking at, would this serve as a a tool for pre-algebra that would help get those kids ready for algebra in the eighth grade? That's what we're hoping. We're not looking at it as an alternative for students who can't, who presumably can't handle algebra. We're looking at it as, would this be a good segue into algebra?
Well, then that's my question.
Yes, and that's the intent of that. I appreciate that question. Um, and we are still aiming for, when we look at the data, we're probably at about fifty to sixty students that are hundred percent will be in the pre-algebra next year in seventh grade. But we're not using it as a stopgap. Any child, any parent, anyone can request to be in algebra, in pre-algebra.
As part of this pilot, something else we would like to do as well is in addition to talking with our consultants at iReady, we'd like to ask them those questions about districts that that have pre-algebra and a seventh grade program, those districts that offer algebra at eighth grade versus the ones that don't using their program. But also, we've been given a list of districts um, around our state and in in bordering states that are using this program and would like to call them and talk to them and see how they're approaching that as well. So we need some more answers on that.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Do we have any other questions? And are you looking for a contract recommendation for next year?
We are not. We we um, so with iReady with K six, we have a five-year contract. We are, um, we had committed to five years of of the ordering of the books and of using their program. And then the PD, we're looking at what we can do in-house and what that would look like. So at this point, we just wanted to come here and share that implementation plan with you because it was a big undertaking.
What about the seventh grade?
So seventh grade, we are only looking for the full-year pilot for next year, so we're looking to do that at no cost.
Okay.
That's great. We love that.
I would love that too.
So, well, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for the very in-depth work. Really appreciate it. It is a big undertaking. So thanks for your leadership in the process.
And as I said, teachers have been invested, so they're they're doing a really amazing job across all of the classrooms.
Awesome.
Thank you.
You so much.
Kim, John, is there anything else for this evening? Not seeing anything, then I would welcome a
A second?
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we are adjourned and thank you all very much.
Thank you. That was great.